Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a short prayer, and I ask Counselor Crick to say it.
Lord, we thank you again for the today that we can come here and just spend time living in the MD of Bonneville, and it's a great place to live. Lord, I also thank you for bringing Reeve Klinsky back to the MD safe from Haiti. And pray your blessing on everyone that lives here, and pray your protection on the staff as they continue to work and maintain the roads and infrastructure and the campgrounds and everything in the MD and keep it running smoothly. And pray your wisdom for this meeting. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Crick, for that prayer. Just before we start the meeting, the agenda, I'd just like to thank the council, staff, all the MD people, the overwhelming, you know, thoughts and prayers from everyone that really touched me. I don't think I deserve all the thoughts and prayers I got, but I sure appreciated them when where I was. So I just want to say a big thank you to everybody. Appreciate it. All right, we have an agenda before us, and is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, administration recommended 9.2.3, the Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare, as an emergent item. So 9.2.3, Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare.
Any other additions? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion. Yes, thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie. Looking for the adoption of the minutes, regular meeting of council, March 26, 2024.
Mr. Chair, we just have one, excuse me, we have one amendment to the March 26 minutes, which is adding Katrina from the Marketing and Communications Department under the attendees list.
Okay, are you guys good with that? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
We just need someone to make the motion.
Oh, I thought Dana didn't make the motion.
I didn't mind that, actually, yeah, sorry.
Okay, well, sorry, I apologize. Who made that? Dana? Okay, move by Deputy Reeve Crick that council approves adoption of the minutes of March 26, 2024, regular meeting of council with the following amendments addition. Katrina Paul, Digital Media Technician, to the attendees list. Any other discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. Can I vote on that? I wasn't even there. Right? Okay. Yes. All right, let's go to nine. Nine, 9.2.1.
Good morning.
Morning.
Administration has received the finalized registration for documents for the subdivision of the MD of Bonneville Airport, Regional Airport lots. Administration is seeking approval from council to move forward with the sale of the lots at fair market value as attached in your packages as a Schedule A. The MD of Bonneville Regional Airport subdivision shown, if I can get you to go to Attachment B, there we go, was registered on March 18th with and created 13 lots. Currently, the lots are being leased with the leaseholders having improvements located on the lands, such as hangars and accessory buildings. Administration is seeking approval by council to offer the lots for sale to the existing leaseholders at fair market value. Additionally, if the leaseholders do not wish to purchase the lot, they would have to remove any improvements from the lands within a specific timeframe. At this time, administration recommended action is that council approves offering the lots at the MD of Bonneville Regional Airport for sale to current leaseholders at fair market value as presented with a deadline of December 31, 2024, to either purchase the lot or remove any current improvements from their lot.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Fadav?
Good morning. So this presentation does not include any potential expansion of the lots? This is just what's currently there?
No, this is currently dealing with what we did complete with the subdivision, just as we had shown on the map. So there are 13 lots that are there that are being leased. And at this time, we are asking to be able to sell those lots that we have currently designed.
Correct. Okay, thanks.
Yes, Counselor Swager?
Can you clarify the either purchase the lot or remove everything from the lot? So I, what am I missing there? Because if they, if they don't want to purchase it, what's their other option? It's just the lease ends, is that?
Through the reef. The option is for them to purchase the lot with their current structure on it or to not purchase the lot and remove their structure from it. And that lot would subsequently become available for someone else to purchase.
Okay, what I kind of was thinking though is that the value of the lot may be better if there's something on it? Like if they have a hangar or something?
Through the reef, we do not own the structures that are on the lot. We only own the lands.
No, I realized that, yeah. Okay.
Yes, Counselor Slipcheck?
I just, I noticed there's no Lot 1 or 4. Could you just explain why Lot 1 and 4 is not on it?
Lot 1, through the reef, sorry, Lot 1 is the remnant of the parcel. So there is a Lot 1, it's identified as the large portion there. And Lot 4 is the lot that we currently have our terminal on.
Mr. Reeve, sorry, one more question. So if we move ahead with this, has there been discussion with, I assume there's been discussion with the lot leases or whatever already, and they're well aware of this?
Through the reef, when we did the initial application for the subdivision, all of the current leaseholders were given notification of the subdivision of the lots.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Skarsen, then Counselor Slipcheck? No? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just going to make the motion for option number one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Skarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves offering the lots of the Municipal District of Bonneville Regional Airport for sale to current leaseholders at the fair market value as presented with a deadline of December 31, 2024, for either purchasing of the lot or removing any current improvements from the lot. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Crick. Oh, sorry, Deputy Reeve.
That's okay. Same person. Further to Counselor Swager's question there, like they were, so they were given a letter notifying them of the subdivision, where they actually notified that they were going to want them to either buy the lots or remove their structures?
The notification that was given to them was that they would have the option to purchase the lots.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I believe you said there was not, or someone said there was not much pushback when they were told that, right? They were all kind of in agreement to that.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Onto 9.2.2.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This morning, administration has seeked approval for the Parks and Campgrounds Bylaw Number 1624 be replaced by the new Parks Camp and Campground Bylaw Number 1864. The Bylaw Number 1864 is a new Parks and Campgrounds Bylaw to provide the control and operation of parks and campgrounds on the jurisdiction of the municipality. The current bylaw was outdated and required revisions to meet current operations. We've attached the old bylaw and the new bylaw, Appendix A being Bylaw Number 1864, and Appendix B, Bylaw Number 1624. We've highlighted some of the changes between the Parks and Campground Bylaws. Some of the definitions, we've changed quite a few of the definitions, just to be more current. Within the rules, we've added campgrounds will be closed between October 1st and April 30th. We've added the Freedom of Information and Protective Privacy Act. We have also added cannabis to be some of the items that are prohibited in public areas to make that more current as well. Under the section of campsite occupation, we changed the number of units on the site to be easier to be understood. Now, we have one camping accommodation unit or one RV plus two tents, or we have three tents is what the basic site charge covers. Before, we had a big list of different items that were there. The major one would be under the vehicles. We've added more rules related to the use of OHBs in campgrounds, where we've now are allowing Pelican Point Campground to have OHBs in there. The Authority of Park Caretakers, this section was removed in its entirety. Authority of Municipal Officials, we changed the title to Authority of the Chief Administrative Officer and removed the Director's Section, as we no longer have the Director in within our department. We also have some changes put into the Authority of the Peace Officer. We've removed the eviction section, and we removed reference to all tags. We now just have tickets. So in reference to the strategic plan, it goes to Goal 3, promote community development. The Municipal Government Act, Chapter M26 RSE 2000, grants the authority to the council to pass the bylaw with respect to people, activities, and things in or near a public place or place that is open to the public. Communication strategy, new bylaw will be advertised on the MD Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87 website. And what administration is recommending is that Bylaw Number 1864 being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87 to provide for the control and operation of parks and campgrounds under the jurisdiction of the municipality to be given first reading.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Fadav?
Good morning. Thanks for updating this. It almost kind of a little bit stale dated. So in regards to 2.5, and we're looking at, sorry, 2.6 under G for the off-road highway. So basically, if the vehicle is not registered, it can be operated in the campground area. But if it is registered, it's okay, correct?
Through the reef, correct.
Okay, just, yeah, just so people don't get on the phone saying, I can't bring my quad, but they can if it's registered. Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. Is that throughout all the campgrounds in the MD?
Right now, it's just Pelican Point that we're allowing.
That's out at Moose Lake here?
Moose Lake.
Right on. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Reeve, I just, it was just maybe a typo stuff. But if you want to look at it right now, I'll just, I'll point it out. Whoever's going to change that. 1.28 says, or other motorized accommodation unit use for indentation? I'm not sure what that meant.
Through the reef, sorry.
1.200 definitions, actually.
100 definitions, okay, 1.2.
1.28.
Hey, got you.
Or other motorized accommodation unit use for indentation? Oh, 1.2C8, sorry. I don't know, you have to just, it doesn't make sense. I'm not sure if it's just a cut and paste from something or?
I see, yeah. Got you.
And then the other one was the definition of motor vehicle? It's the same paragraph, I guess. No, it's actually, where's that? It's I under. This says motor vehicle means a motor is defined? And so that's, I mean, I looked at definition, I mean, they don't say, they don't say that, so just the word motor has to be expanded to what it actually means? Yeah.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, someone like to make a motion for first reading? Yes, Counselor Swager? Okay, thank you, Counselor Swager, for making a motion on behalf of council. That Bylaw Number 1864 being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87 to provide the control and operations of parks and campgrounds on the jurisdiction of municipalities be given first reading. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. I guess we'll go on to 9.2.3, Cold Lake Hearts for Health.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
At the regular meeting of council on March 26, 2024, a delegation was made by Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare, and they provided this information and requested sponsorship for their annual fundraising gala, which is happening on May 6th at the Cold Lake Energy Center. Council at that time directed administration to bring their request back to a future meeting of council for consideration. The MD supports communities' healthcare services through annual grants and sponsorships to Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare, Bonneville Health Foundation, and the Bonneville Child and Adolescent Mental Health Collaborative. Historically, the MD has provided anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 in sponsorship of this annual gala for the past 10 years. This included direct sponsorship, equipment, specific sponsorship, silent auction prize donations, and the purchase of two tables to attend the event. Just a little bit more detail on that is provided. Specifically, for the last three years, the gala last year received a $10,000 sponsorship plus three silent auction donations. 2022, the sponsorship was $15,000 plus auction items. 2021 was $10,000 sponsorship. 2020 was $15,000. We also provide them sponsorships for the annual Mega Bounce Run. The last two years was through our community action grant applications, which ranged between $3,000 and $5,000 in value. And in 2018, pre-COVID, we had provided a $1,500 donation. We also, in the last two years, have partnered with them for their annual Sparkle in the Park event during Christmas, where we have provided the Cold Lake MD Park as a location for their winter. Their winter cars. My brain's still on vacation mode, my apologies. For their really cool Sparkle in the Park event and the associated services with that as well. So cleaning out the snow, providing the power, and just general marketing and promotions of the event. So this year, Hearts for Healthcare Foundation has invited the MD to consider the superior level support for the gala in the amount of $25,000, as per the attached Appendix A, which has all the different levels highlighted there. And this would include two tables of eight to the event. They have also requested the provision of two promotional item donations for their online and live auction during the event. Attached for council's review is their sponsorship package and the initial request that they had presented two weeks ago. Reference to our strategic plan, this report does reflect back to Goal Number 1, building a prosperous and sustainable community. Our cost and source of funding, they are requesting the $25,000 superior level support and a promotional item donation. The source of funding for this is the 2024 council operating budget, specifically our grants to industry and non-government organizations. What hasn't already been allocated for 2024 is currently a balance of $26,000. Communication strategy, the Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare will be notified in writing of the decision today of council. Administration's recommended action is that council approves the request for sponsorship by Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare for their 2024 annual fundraising gala in the amount of $25,000 as a superior level sponsor to be funded from the 2024 operating budget. You'll note in that recommended action, given the large amount of it, we didn't break out additional silent auction items or anything like that, like we've done in the past. Our recommended action is just to do it in one lump sum. But it's totally at council's discretion.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion?
Just going to point out, we just approved $15,000 for the Bonneville Health Foundation a few weeks ago. So this is higher. I'm not sure what, we bought tables, I think, as well, so this would include the tables, though.
Through the reef, that is correct. The Bonneville Health Foundation Gala was $15,000 plus the tickets for the, were separate.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for option one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the request for sponsorship by Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare for their 2024 annual fundraiser gala in the amount of $25,000 as a superior level sponsor to be funded from the 2024 operating budget. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto 9.3, Corporate Services, 9.3.1, Bylaw Number 1863.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
So this report is related to Bylaw Number 1863, Amending Fire Hall Number 1 Renovation Loan Bylaw, Lending Bylaw Number 1841 for the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority's renovation project at Fire Hall Number 1 in the amount of $4,500,000. Received third reading by council on May 9, 2023. A review of this bylaw revealed a typographical error on the original repayment schedule, which formed part of this bylaw. The proposed amendment corrects that typographical error. And the, the attached for council's review is Appendix A, Bylaw Number 1863, the Amending Fire Hall Number 1 Renovation Loan Bylaw, and Appendix B, which is the original Bylaw Number 1841. This is in reference to the Municipal Government Act, Sections 264.2, Section 265.1, and Section 268. There is no cost implication related to this amendment, and the amendment will be posted on the MD website. So the recommended action is that Bylaw Number 1863, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87, to amend Bylaw Number 1841, Fire Hall Number 1 Renovation Loan Bylaw, be given first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, Counselor Swager, go ahead.
Yeah, like in 30 words or less, can you tell us what, why the change? I kind of looked through it. It looks like we missed a payment or something at the end or something? I'm not sure.
The very last line of the repayment schedule was tabbed over to the wrong spot. So if you, if you look at the very last payment that's scheduled for 2042, December 31st, $174,890.78 was entered under the payment amount. That payment amount should have been $179,263.05. So it was, it was tabbed over one too far.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion? Yes?
Motion for first reading, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council. That Bylaw Number 1863 being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87 to amend Bylaw Number 1841, Fire Hall Number 1 Renovation Loan Bylaw to be given first reading. Any discussion on this first reading? Okay, I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie, that's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a short break until 9:30, and our first delegation comes in. Thank you. All right, welcome back. We're going to our first delegation. 2024 Community Action Grant Major Capital Project Stream Applications.
Good day, once again, council.
Yeah, good morning, once again.
Today, we have with us applications for the Community Action Grants, major capital project category of our policy. As per that policy, all major capital project applicants must present council as a delegation on their projects. Council does have a copy of the applications that were submitted by March 15th deadline. They are also, they are in your binders, which you received two weeks ago. The applicants today will be giving you an overview of their project, and this gives you the opportunity to ask any questions that you may have about them directly. Representatives from the following organizations are in attendance, in person and virtually. We have the Goodridge Social and Agricultural Society, which will present first on their Hall Drainage Remediation Project, followed by a virtual presentation from the Stepping Stones Crisis Society, who will present on their Net Zero New Build Shelter Project. Following these presentations, there are two options to council. Administration is recommending that council accepts the presentations by the Community Action Grant Major Capital Project Stream 2024 applicants as information, and furthermore, that council goes into closed sessions following the presentations to go ahead and deliberate directly following the presentations and to make decisions on how we would like to proceed as far as awarding goes forward. Or that council accepts the presentations by the Community Action Grant Major Capital Project Stream 2024 applicants as information, and furthermore directs administration to bring the applications back to the next regular meeting of council for deliberation. So with that, I'd like to ask our representative from the Goodridge Social and Agricultural Society to come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lawrence Kudkoski, on behalf of the Goodridge Social and Agricultural Society. We are right now in the process of applying for this grant through the MD. We, we're going to put weeping tile around our facility. Right now, we're having a water issue. There's heaving, and our asphalt that we put down about 15 years ago is completely heaved up around the facility, making it hard for access, making the doors in the wintertime not usable. So what we need to do is, what we're going to do is put weeping tile and pump outs around the facility with a vapor, what do you call that, a vapor capture around, about two feet to three feet around the hall. Then we're going to put a new sidewalk in front of the facility with new access pads on each door. Now, once the SEER project is complete, we're hoping to Now, once the SEER project is complete, we're hoping to remedy the, the water problem. Because if we can keep the water away from the building, we should keep the heaving and problem away.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions, or? Okay, well, thank you. I know I was there for a function there, and I did notice heaving in the back, where you have their barbecues, I noticed along the last time I was there, for sure.
Yeah, we did apply for the SEPA grant. It was granted to us, and it's already in our, our bank. So the provincial government gave us $92,000 and change already for the grant, and like I said, this SEER grant from the MD, to our understanding, was and could be used as our matchable, and that's what we're after.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah, Councillor Fedev, please.
Morning.
Morning.
So just looking at your statements there, financial positions, so under restricted cash, is that set aside for a certain project, or is that involved?
Okay, our, our set aside cash there is for a, either major, like super major build, like say the, the hall would burn, we'd have a catastrophe where, where we needed an excess of cash to get a grant to restart or rebuild, and that's what we keep it for. Or we need a major renovation, say we'd have to completely redo the, the floor inside the facility, which now would cost in excess of half a million dollars to redo a floor, where we'd need that to, to be a matchable, where we could go ahead and start the project without delaying. Like, right now, any project takes, takes so much time, and the grant process and the whole process takes so much time, even for the contractors we used. They were generous enough to give us a 365-day wait on the quote because of the grant process and the, just the money process. And we keep this SEER grant, this year access money for that, for that, we're just making sure that whenever that hall does need something, it's gonna get it.
You do have insurance?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good. Just your first statement, that was all you had, good.
Yeah. But as you know, insurance doesn't cover everything. Covers very little, these days, actually.
Yeah, I can agree to that one. Anybody else have any more comments? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation.
Just, so right now, we have the Steppingstones Crisis Society, who will be presenting on their Net Zero New Build Shelter Project.
I can't hear you speak some more?
Can you hear it?
Yeah, now we can. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Just to give you a heads up, we're not able to see your screen, so just let us know if there are any concerns or anything like that through the way we can just be, like the camera's off on your end. Good morning, thank you so much for taking the time to be with us. I'm Cindy, I'm the Director of Strategic Priorities with Steppingstones Crisis Society. With me, of course, is my second Director, Susan White. Thank you so much for accommodating me, guys, on short notice, as you know, we are in Fredericton, so if the laptop got a little bit or anything like that, please just log us so that we can circle back and pick up if we want to log off. So thank you again for the opportunity to present on our project. As you know, we have done a delegation previously on this project in itself, and so we just wanted to reiterate that we are embarking, and we have embarked on a new building project that is going to see amalgamation of our programs and services into one physical building. And so our building and our programs and support are available to our Lakefront Region, which is inclusive to the city of Cold Lake, town of Bonneville, and of course, the city of Bonneville. This new building project is going to allow us to create more background service provisions for the community members of the lakefront, and is going to be able to expand on our efforts as well. There's a lot of our efforts as well on the prevention work, so that we can break the cycle of violence, which is ultimately the goal here for us. So right now, as you know, our programs and services over the last 40 years have grown and expanded to now be outfitted into four different physical locations in the Lakefront Region. And so there are a lot of barriers to transportation. Oh, I'm just getting a no signal. Can you guys still hear us? Can you guys still hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And, yeah, so being able to amalgamate all of these programs and services under one roof is really going to help reduce a lot of the barriers to access for a lot of the women and children in our community. So it's gonna reduce those, those stressors on transportation, it's really going to be able to provide a better handoff from one program to the next, to be able to provide that continuum of care for the survivors of violence in our community. What's really exciting about our project is we are looking at the long-term sustainability of this building project and this investment in the Lakeland Region. So we want to ensure that this building, of course, is environmentally friendly but also sustainable to operate, and this is why we've also chosen to go net zero. So at the very start of this project, we were really fortunate to receive grant federal funding from the federal government, that was really going to cover the majority of this building project. And as we all experienced over the last few years, we had a lot of economic downturns, I guess, as a result of the pandemic, and that really caused a lot of increases in kind of the supply chain and things like that. And of course, because this community has been so wonderfully supportive, when we embarked on this building project, we prioritized finding local trades and local labor, just to ensure that those jobs stay within our community as well. And so right now, where we're at is we have broken ground, we are well underway with our building project, we are net zero ready, and we're really excited to be able to kind of bring this program and bring this kind of service provision and this building into the Lakeland, to be able to support, a better support to the survivors of violence in the MD of Bonneville, the town of Bonneville, and of course, the city of Cold Lake. So our ask to the MD of Bonneville today is for a capital investment of $200,000, which of course then we will also match with our equity as per the grant guideline. And I realize that we're not able to kind of provide new information. At the time of application, we weren't at the end of our fiscal year, so we weren't able to, we were only able to forecast based on our turnaways due to lack of capacity. So what that sounds like now, we do have the final numbers. So in 2023 and 2024, just due to lack of shelter space or beds available, we had to turn away 292 women and children in our community. And with this new building project, we're gonna be able to see more bed spaces available, we're gonna be able to better support a woman and for their children when they're leaving, because we're gonna have more shelter beds available and things like that, so.
I think that's it. I, I know that you've heard most of this before, and I think the council was there when we presented, so if there are any questions, we'd be happy to, more than happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, is there any questions? Yes, Councillor Swager?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Reeve. Can you just give us a quick update? I drove by there, I don't know, like a month ago and took a look, but, so can you just give us an update on sort of how far you are and what phases you're in, and that sort of thing?
Absolutely. So if you drive by now, the, the very last piece of the tarp has come off, so we're done with winter hoarding and heating, which is really good news for us, because that's expensive. So under the tarp, they had fully poured the main floor and the second floor, so right now, they are, just for our reporting purposes to CMHC, we are sitting at about 30% completion. And I think that works in size of the building as well as cost of the building, just depends on who we're reporting on, which one they want us to report. So they are doing the shoring up for the third floor, and they have just either, this week, if they haven't done it already, they are shoring up to do the, the third floor. So that's, you're welcome.
Yeah, Councillor Fedev?
Good morning. Thanks for, thanks for making it. Just a good question, I mean, you guys, you guys have done grants and all that stuff before, and our grants are too much different, where if a project has started in our policy, you know, eligible for the grant. So is there any other projects that you guys have that this grant could be used for in the projected near future?
So there are several parts of the capital process of this that are not included in this bill. So in order to be able to use a CMHC grant and move forward, we had to remove things. So there are probably, there are, not probably, but there are about $1.8 million worth of project pieces that are part of the, that will be part of our, our complex and the continuum of care that are not included in what we're doing, and we cannot start them until we have raised the funds. You're very welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Well, ladies, thank you on behalf of the MD for making this presentation this morning, and have a great day there. Are you guys in Cold Lake, obviously?
No, actually, we are about to present, we're here, we were invited to present at the Canadian Housing and Renewal Association Congress on Housing and Homelessness in Fredericton. So, yeah, we're doing that tomorrow morning. So thus the, not being able to make it to Cold Lake, the, the timing was off, but we're, we're super, super excited. It's our third national presentation, and this one is multi-sector, so.
We're really proud to represent the Lakeland, actually, and be able to demonstrate, because they're looking at this as like a piloted project and a model for sheltering across Canada. So we're actually really excited to kind of talk about the Lakeland and kind of where we are and, and things like that, so out the east coast.
Well, I'm, I'm sure your ladies, the way you're excited there, I'm sure you guys are gonna do a bang-up job. So God bless you girls there in Figerton, and have a great day tomorrow.
Mr. Reeve, one last question. How was the solar eclipse? You probably saw it way better than we did.
We were on the plane, so we saw the pieces in the airport. Um, yeah, our taxi driver from the airport had a, like, he videoed it on his camera, and it was spectacular, so it was in totality here, and we, we missed it. I'm too far with the first to be staring in your eyes, but I imagined that it was beautiful.
All right, ladies, thanks again, you guys have a great day.
Thank you so much for consideration. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. We have one more, yeah? Correct? No, that's it? Sorry, guys. Does someone like to make a motion?
Sure.
Yeah, which, what, number one?
And we can go into camera right now, I guess, and discuss it.
You wanna make the, we have to make the motion first? Correct? Okay. Thank you, Councillor Crick, for making a motion. On behalf of council, that council accepts the presentations by the Community Action Grant, Major Capital Project Stream 2024 applicants as information, and furthermore, that council goes into a closed session at whatever time as per section 19 and 24 for applications deliberations. You wanna do that right away? The time right away?
Do we have time?
Okay, so what time is it now? 9:48, so 9:50? Okay, very good. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? If I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Reeve, while council is voting, who from staff would you like to have stay for the closed session, if any?
I think they can all stay for this, can't they? I don't think nobody has no. We have our delegation, Metrics Group LLP. Welcome, sir, or, welcome, ma'am, first. I gotta look up before I talk. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. I'm just going to introduce the reports of the presentation that Jeff Alston is here to present to you today.
Absolutely.
So I've written a report. We have financial statements, audited consolidated financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2023, and administration will also be seeking council approval in accordance with the Alberta Municipal Government Act of those audited financial statements, so that we can submit them to the province on time. At the close of each fiscal year, the financial records of a municipality must be audited by an independent auditor. Metrics Group LLP is the appointed auditor that prepared the statements on behalf of the MD of Bonneville 87. As per the Municipal Government Act, the council-appointed auditor must present the audited financial statements, including the auditor's report to council. The annual results of the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority are consolidated within this financial statement. BRFA is reporting a surplus of $883,994.73. Submission of the audited financial statements and the financial information returned to the province must occur on or before May 1st of the subsequent fiscal year. So the total operating surplus for 2023 is $6,377,730. This amount is comprised of BRFA's operating surplus and the remaining $5,493,732.99 is the resulting surplus of operating revenues over operating expenditures. This represents a 5.1% variance from 2023 approved budget. Approximately $3 million of that 5.4 million is directly related to increased investment income that was unanticipated in our budget document. So in your package, you'll see Appendix A, which is the presentation that Jeff is about to give you. You'll see Appendix B, Draft Financial Statements, and Appendix C is the Audit Findings Report. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Alston, and thank him for being here today.
Hello.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. How's everyone doing today?
I think okay.
Not too bad? Ready to talk finances, or maybe a bit?
Awesome.
All right. I don't know, is there, I thought there was a thing to change the slides, but maybe not? No? I'll just tell you? Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Do I just scroll? Okay, perfect. Awesome, okay. All right, well, thanks for having me here this, this morning. Usually, to begin this presentation, I always give you guys a bit of an overview of an audit, so why we have an audit and the importance of it, and really, it's to enhance the degree of confidence of the intended users of the financial statements, with the main users being yourselves as counselors, ratepayers, the province of Alberta municipal affairs, so organizations or individuals with a vested interest in the financial performance of the MD of Bonneville. This is achieved by us as auditors expressing an opinion, so we give assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So what that means is as an auditor, we seek reasonable assurance, so it's a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute, so we do not audit every transaction that happened during the year. We also exercise professional judgment, maintain professional skepticism, so questioning mind, we stay alert to conditions which may indicate possible misstatement within those financial statements, so areas such as cutoff, want to make sure that transactions have been recorded in the correct fiscal period, so we do do work subsequent to your end, as well as leading up to, to make sure, again, that accruals have been accounted for correctly. We're looking at revenue recognition, making sure that revenue is being recognized when either performance obligations or services have been met, and as well as your collectability of accounts receivable, so is the amount in accounts receivable deemed to be collectible, or should potentially be allowance for those amounts? And as well as a critical assessment of audit evidence, so is the evidence we're looking at obtained from a third party, is it valid source documentation, has it any potential manipulation? Those are just areas in relation to professional skepticism. When it comes to page three and four of your financial statements, is our Independent Auditor's Report. So at the top of that report, we give our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects to financial position, results of operations in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, so those are the same standards that all government organizations follow across Canada. When it comes to the basis for opinion, we note that that is audited in accordance with. with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. And auditing standards are the same across Canada. So whether you're a local government, a publicly traded company, or a not-for-profit, auditing standards are the same. It's the opinion with the reporting framework that could be different. Now, when it comes to responsibility and management, those charged with governance, uh, for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And then the second part of our auditor's report outlines our responsibilities as the auditors, which in turn is, is, um, our objective, which is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Uh, this next slide is a snapshot of where the M D was at as at December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, so I'll go over some financial highlights, uh, for the year. You'll see your cash and temporary investment position was up seven and a half million dollars in the year as the M D had generated thirty-six million from its operations. You then purchased twenty-one and a half million of tangible capital assets and as well as moved six and a half million into investments. When it comes to taxes and grants in place of taxes, uh, your current taxes was up about five hundred and sixty thousand or sixty percent year-over-year, up to one point four from eight twenty. But your arrears taxes were down to eight seventy-three or two hundred and thirty thousand of one point one million. Uh, you have an allowance in there for, uh, for doubtful accounts of three hundred thousand, which is up slightly, thirty-two thousand, leaving you with the net change of three hundred thousand increase year-over-year. So although it is up a bit, the arrears taxes being down is a bit promising as the, is the taxes owing are more current, so less than one year as of the date, uh, December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. When you start to see your arrears taxes really increasing substantially year-over-year, that can be a cause for concern as you're not deemed to be collecting the taxes that you are taxing and, in essence, expecting to spend in the year on, on services. Uh, other receivables of the M D, uh, trade and other, uh, so included in there is three hundred and fifty thousand of interest income, uh, Bonneville Regional Fire consolidation of three hundred and thirty-three, and as well as general trade receivables. Your receivables from other governments of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand is made up of M S I capital funding, uh, to be collected, uh, subsequent to year end. Prior year, you had additional amounts in there. M S I was at two and a half, and your Canada Community Building Fund was at seven sixty-five. So that's why you see the decrease there. G S T was up at year end to seven eleven from three seventy-two. This year, it represents three months' worth of G S T. Prior year was two, as well as there was additional, uh, additional, um, costs, um, at year end versus prior year, which caused the G S T to increase. And then an allowance here of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, leaving you at two point four million of receivables, uh, to be collected at year end. Uh, back to the statement of financial position. Uh, the next item here is your debt recoverable for local improvements. So that was a principal reduction year-over-year as, uh, taxes were collected on those. Uh, loan receivable of two point one million. So this is the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority, uh, loan for, uh, building and rentals. So this represents twenty-nine percent of the total, as the M D does own seventy-one percent of the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority. So that amount is higher, in essence, to be reclaimed. But when we do the consolidated entry, it gets eliminated to the M D's portion, which is the twenty, or the, less the M D's portion, which would be twenty-nine percent of the amount. Uh, land held for resale of three hundred and forty-four thousand, and then portfolio investments of a hundred and six million. So here you see some change, uh, in relation to the new accounting standards that came out this year, as the M D had dropped the new financial instrument section within public sector accounting standards, uh, which requires you to report, uh, investments at fair value, uh, when there is a market component of it, and as well as investments at amortized cost. So your fair value component here is in relation to your investments that are under principal protected notes. Uh, so these notes or these, uh, investments are tied to the, to the market for, uh, for increases there, and then are, uh, protected, uh, through a hedge, um, ensuring that the principal balance, uh, again, is protected there. So the reflection of this, uh, change in fair value is reflected in your new schedule for remeasurement gains and losses, where it indicates the amount that the investment is currently at as at December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. When it comes to your investments at amortized costs of forty-seven million, those are made up of fixed income securities, so ranging from two point two to as high as six point seven, or six point zero seven percent. And they mature between June twenty twenty-four and as late, long as September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Also contains the Bonneville Regional Fire term deposits. Those range from four point two five to five percent and mature next year. Uh, so after looking at your total investments, uh, you'll see the M D's financial assets were up to a hundred and forty point seven million from a hundred and twenty-seven million the prior year, or a thirteen point six million dollar increase. Uh, when it comes to liabilities, uh, the M D's accounts payable and accrued liabilities, uh, sixteen point four million versus five million the prior year. Uh, the bulk of that change is due to a taxation reassessment that was, uh, um, ruled, ruled on in January eighteen and nineteen of two thousand twenty-four in relation to ten point one million to be repaid in, uh, in assessment of, uh, a property, uh, that was, um, determined to be over, the assessment was determined to be too high in, uh, prior years from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. So that accrual has been booked and then reflected in the financial statements for this year. Uh, when it comes to deposit liabilities, uh, one point five million versus three point four. So they had a subdivision deposit, uh, decrease there. And then deferred revenue at four million. So deferred revenue represents government funding or, sorry, grants that you would have obtained throughout the year, but have yet to spend those on projects. So during the year, you receive additional one point six million, uh, your Canada Community Building Fund of eight hundred thousand dollars has your two thousand twenty-three allocation, as well as an Alberta Water Course Remediation Grant for eight hundred. The M D then spent one point four million of its deferred revenue on capital projects. So the five point three million you see coming up from M S I is in relation to Township Road six-ten, Highway twenty-eight to Range Road four-sixty. And then you'd be left with just under four million dollars to be spent in, uh, in the upcoming fiscal year. After looking at deferred revenue, uh, employee benefit obligations, so that's your vacation overtime accrual, which is just over a million dollars, um, pretty much in line with, uh, what you saw there. And then the new section, uh, asset retirement obligation. So the M D, uh, staff performed , uh, work over the asset retirement obligation adoption, so P S thirty-two eighty. Uh, this included buildings of one point three million, engineered structures of three million, and machine equipment of thirty-five thousand, with the engineered structures made up of, uh, of the landfill component. Uh, so at year end, we ended up at four point three five six million. Uh, this was measured using present value techniques. Uh, so the present value was calculated using total undiscounted cash flow. So in essence, the amount is higher than four point, uh, three million. Right now it's calculated at just about five million. And then we discount back to today's date. So it's based on when we expect to retire these assets in the future. And if you were to retire them today, that's the cost. But you will see it increase over years as that liability increases as you move towards the expected retirement date of those assets. So again, what this obligation means is that this obligation existed within the M D previously. So you had landfills that had costs associated with, uh, reclaiming those. You have buildings potentially with, uh, with asbestos in them that needed to be remediated. You had other assets, uh, within your tangible capital assets that required additional retirement, uh, based on, uh, other obligations. So those are now reflected within your financial statements at a cost as of December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. So this gives you the opportunity then to ensure that you have funds in the future to meet those obligations without being surprised that, hey, we have this extra four million dollars of costs that we didn't know about. So I think it's a good adoption. I think it provides value. Uh, so based on, again, the work that was done, uh, we feel that that's a good, uh, good start or estimate for that, uh, the obligation there at four point four million. So you'll see after that, then, your landfill closure and post-closure is no more, as it's now part of the asset retirement obligation. And then the long-term debt of the, uh, of the M D. So long-term debt at year end of nine point five million, uh, debt repaid in the year of eight hundred and fifty thousand, uh, interest paid of three hundred and thirteen thousand, and we had no new debt in the year. Uh, when it comes to your debt limits, so your debt limits are calculated at one point five times your operating revenue, so just under a hundred and fifty-three million. Total debt of nine point five left you with an amount of unused of a hundred and forty-three million. And then your debt servicing limit, which is twenty point two five percent of total operating revenues, is about twenty-five million, or sorry, point two five times, uh, operating revenue. And then your debt servicing for next year of one point one. So again, well within, uh, your debt limits, uh, that are outlined in the Municipal Government Act. So in total, uh, your liabilities increase this year up to thirty-six point eight million from thirty point five. Uh, as you saw the increase in the amount of assessment or tax assessments to be repaid, as well as the change in asset retirement obligations versus prior year's landfill of three point one there, caused a net increase of six point two million. So if you take your financial assets of a hundred and forty million, less thirty-six point seven, you'd end up with a net financial asset position of just under a hundred and four million. Uh, so that would mean that you have, uh, you have, if you take your cash, collect your receivables, your investments, you will be able to pay off all your liabilities within the M D and be left with a hundred and four million. Comes to non-financial assets, your tangible capital assets here. Uh, so it's a breakdown. You started the year with a net book value of two hundred and seventy-five million. You see total additions in the year of just over twenty-one point five. Uh, you spent six point six million on paving roads throughout the year as part of the engineering structure additions. Um, construction in progress, uh, related to, uh, the Manitowocan Highway fifty-five bridge file there, as well as the Bonneville Regional Fire consolidation in regards to the fire building amount. There about two million makes up that. Uh, for machine equipment, uh, various items in there, as well as a couple of tractors, and then vehicles, and a couple of fire trucks, and, uh, four freight liners to make up the bulk of the additions. When it comes to amortization expense, you'll see your amortization expense at twenty point two million, and this represents the usage of your assets in the year. So as you pave roads and they last forty years, or you, you know, construct new buildings and they last forty years, a percentage of that cost that you've incurred that goes into here gets amortized into your operations. So you can see by looking at this, you added twenty-one and a half million to your tangible capital assets, and really that replaced the amortization you use of twenty point two, keeping your net book value consistent year-over-year. So in essence, you put enough additional funding into capital to replace the usage of your assets in the year. So definitely keeping them, um, you know, keeping them, um, you know, repaired and, and, and current is good. And when you see situations where your amortization is well exceeding your additions and you start to see a longer trend of that, it's really indicative of assets aging and potentially for future replacement, uh, not keeping up with that. So here you can see that, uh, the money going back in is replacing, uh, what's being used. Uh, so other non-financial assets, your inventory for consumption, uh, so gravel makes up the bulk of that at forty-three million. Last year was at forty-five. So you're starting to see a decrease in the amount there, and as well as one point five million of materials and, and other parts there. So that left you a total non-financial assets of three hundred and twenty-one million, uh, down slightly from prior year's three hundred and twenty-two. Uh, when it comes to your accumulated surplus, uh, so that was at four hundred and twenty-five million. So sorry, you would take total net financial assets plus non-financial assets, will end up at four hundred and twenty-five million. So your accumulated surplus is broken up into a few categories. Uh, unrestricted surplus was up ten million, up to seventy-six million from sixty-six million in the prior year. Your restricted surplus was down one and a half million, down eighty-seven from eighty-eight. And then your equity in tangible capital assets was down to two point three, uh, was from two sixty-two to two sixty-four. Uh, so what that means is there's a change in your surplus of six point three million that we had talked about in relation to your annual surplus year-over-year. That six point three million, um, is represented by a cash surplus, where you see in your unrestricted and restricted surplus net increase of about eight and a half million. And then you see a decrease in your equity in T C A of two point three, which is indicative of your tangible capital asset component of that amount. So although your surplus was six point three, uh, you'll see as your annual surplus on your financial statements, more, there was actually a higher cash component of that surplus, um, and then a negative portion in relation to the tangible capital asset side of that. So capital grant funding, less, um, amortization in what you purchase. So, so that's kind of, uh, in relation to that. Uh, so when it comes to your total, um, accumulated surplus or unrestricted surplus, uh, plus your accumulated remeasurement gain-loss schedule here, which represents the, uh, the principal protected note, uh, current value in relation to, to that product. So that's the new schedule there. You see your surplus before T C A of about a hundred and sixty-three million. So that hundred and sixty-three million is broken up into your net financial asset or cash position of a hundred and four million, which you see on the statement of financial position. Inventory and prepaid expenses to be used in future years, uh, long-term debt, your asset retirement obligation, and that's how you'd work your way back to the hundred and sixty-three million there. Uh, so that's the statement of financial position. Uh, so the next part of your financial statements, the statement of operations, or page, uh, it should be page five.
Just ask a question there, then?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So as your, um, let me go back here. So as your inventory for consumption goes down, um, so none of, none of that gets counted as in, like, as an asset when we put the gravel on the roads? Like, how does that work?
Yeah. So if you did your, do your own road, road construction, that'll start to get, including your tangible capital assets. If you do repairs on the road, it'll go as a operating expense on your statement of operations.
So just, I guess, depending on, so you're saying if we build a new road, it counts, but if we're just re-graveling a road, then it's just?
Just expense. Yeah, as maintenance, yeah.
So basically then, like, um, let's say in ten years or whatever, and there's no gravel left to, to use, you would be down forty million in accumulated surplus, basically, then?
If you, yeah, if you use all forty-four million of the inventory, like, on operating expenses, yeah, you would see a decrease in that of forty-four million. Cause you would, what'll happen is, is you, when you remove the inventory, you have a direct hit on your operations, which would then cause you to have a reduction in your annual surpluses. So that would then decrease your hundred and sixty-three million, yeah, down to one-twenty or one-ten, yeah.
So I'm just curious, and maybe this is for Al, but do we, like, do we use any gravel for new roads at all, or is it all, is it all used for?
Some, uh, through the Reeve, uh, to Councillor Skarson, some of the, for example, the, and I'm not sure about six-ten, but the vast majority of our gravel is used for, uh, road repair. We, we're not building too many new roads, uh, so mostly this book doesn't expense, uh, currently. Uh, there probably are some small projects, uh, but the vast majority of our gravel is used in a re-graveling program, just to keep the road, uh, at, at its current value.
Thank you. Well, you have a question?
Oh, yeah.
So at the beginning there, you talked about, uh, I'm just gonna scroll up here to the beginning there. You talked about the surplus of, like, five million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, and then eight hundred and eighty-three thousand was from the?
That was Susan, yeah.
B R F A?
Susan talked about that, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
How does that work exactly? I'm a little confused on that one.
Uh, so on your financial statements, so your total, your total, uh, annual surplus, your total revenue less your expenses, you end up at six point four million. Uh, so included in that, she was saying, in relation to what you had budgeted for, there was additional investment income that you had earned, uh, with the rate increases, uh, on your products throughout two thousand twenty-three. And then as well as, cause you consolidate the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority, your ownership of seventy-one percent in there, that actually increases your surplus as well if they have a surplus, or if they have a deficit. So that was the component there.
So the eight hundred and eighty-three thousand from them, is that, uh, seventy-one percent of their surplus? Or is that?
Yeah, seventy-one percent of it, yeah.
No, wait. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, and you see them, like, you'll see, like, you pick up their term deposits, you pick up, uh, portion of their, their debt, which is actually owing back to you, which then offsets that receivable amount that I was talking about, that loan receivables, that two-something million. That's almost the portion, that's the non-M D portion that's be collected from other, um, other municipalities or, um, but that's, uh, so that, that entity gets consolidated and then entries get eliminated based on what the M D contributed of Bonneville Regional Fire versus what the percentage is being picked up. So on the statement of operations, uh, and looking at your operating revenues, uh, you see your net municipal taxes here, up to just under eighty-six million from eighty-two point four, or five percent increase there in relation to increase in assessment values. Your investment income, as Susan spoke on earlier, up to four point six million from two point three, so a hundred percent increase year-over-year there, as you, uh, saw the increase in the rates and, uh, really, um, really added, again, extra income into the, the M D, hopefully to help offset some of the increased costs that you're probably seeing on everything else as well. Uh, when it comes to user fees and sales of goods, you saw an increase in revenue there, up to six and a half from four point three. Uh, a portion of that is in relation to the Bonneville Regional Fire user fees increasing there. So again, picking up the consolidation, as well as your Kinnisou Ski Hill, which is open all year. So there was added revenue in there, uh, for that. And government transfer operating of one point five, other various, uh, smaller items here, uh, left you with total revenues of, uh, one hundred and one million, eight sixty, up six point six million from prior year's ninety-five, and as well as an increase from budget of five point four million. Uh, this is just a bit of a pie chart, just to give you a breakdown, but mainly your municipal property taxes make up eighty-four percent of your total revenue. Last year was eighty-seven. And then your- And then your investment income is where you see the other increase here, up to five percent versus two percent in the prior year. When it comes to expenses by function, so departments in which the funding was used, council, administration, and general government was up to forty-four point six and thirty-three point three. That's where you see the ten million dollar tax assessment increase or repayment amount. So that's why you see the, the larger swing there year over year. Protective services were at eight point five, municipal planning, agricultural services, and economic development at just over four million. Road, streets, walks, and lighting was up to thirty-two and a half from twenty-eight and a half, and that's in relation to the gravel usage, so we're just talking about it going into expenses. It's about three and a half, four million going into the expense category there, which is causing the, the decrease in the inventory, as well as the usage in the year, as well as additional brushing costs incurred. When it comes to water, sewer, and wastewater management, you see an increase there up to five point six from three point nine, and that contains the bulk of your accretion expense in relation to your A R O. So an accretion expense for A R O, as your A R O increases every year, a portion comes into your operations, which is called the accretion expense, or the increase in the liability year over year. So based on the adoption, the M D had used a prospective method to adopt. This year's accretion expense is at one point seven, in turn, increasing the initial adoption amount, plus the accretion to get to four point four. So it's almost like amortization expense for tangible capital assets. You have a usage component that comes into operations, the accretion expense is in relation to the A R O. So another kind of non-cash item, potentially to be thinking about within your operations, but again, is an estimate for future payout. Parks and Recreation Liability up to eight point three from seven point six. So that left you a total operating expenses of one, one oh four point nine million versus eighty-seven in the prior year, or an eighteen million dollar increase. The increase really, ten million from the tax, one point seven from accretion, and then about three and a half million from the gravel. When it comes to expenses by function, without amortization or accretion expense, so the, the line graph represents your budget. So you see your budget kind of at, or, or a little bit above a lot of these different departments, except for the administration and general government in relation to the ten million assessment. But all other ones were either at, or just below the budgeted amount approved by, by council. When it comes to expenses by objects, so what, what those funds or services were, were spent there. Salaries, wages, and benefits up to twenty-five point two from twenty-four point three, as you saw an increase in F T E. Amortization at twenty million. Transfers to other governments was up to twenty-eight point seven from twenty-seven point six, is related to your improvement district payments that you pay out, so you saw an increase in that. Materials, goods, and supplies was up to eleven point three from seven million. That was the gravel usage I just spoke on before. Other, ten point four in relation to the taxation, and then your accretion expense of one point nine million. So again, back to the hundred and five million, and then this just kind of gives you a breakdown within each, each, sorry, said it by department, but by actual costs of what it was spent on. So you take your total operating revenue less your expenses, you see you end up with an annual deficit in the year from operating revenue less operating expenses of three million. You then have other income, which is funding in relation to capital portion here. So you see your government transfer capital of six point two million, that's that M S I capital money, mainly that was spent on, on the highway project there. And then your asset retirement obligation adoption of three point one million, which came through in the current year. Gain on disposals of tangible capital assets, and then contributed assets, which is made up of land of thirteen thousand, seven hundred, for a total of nine point four million. So you take the loss on the initial part there of three million, plus nine point four from other income, you end up with an annual surplus of six point, or just under six point four million. On the back of the M D's financial statement is another note, which, which works the budget reconciliation back to your operating surplus. So within your financial statements, on the statement of operations, it shows a surplus of fifteen point eight million. There's adjustments, because public sector accounting standards are different than how you would budget when you're budgeting more on a cash basis, you know how much money's coming in versus what's to be spent. With this, there's, there's accruals, as well as amortization, which doesn't get budgeted for. So those items get reflected here. So you'll see your amortization expense gets added back. Net transfers from reserves were actually one point five. Acquisition of tangible capital assets of twenty-one point five, as well as other adjustments in relation to debt and tangible capital assets. You end up with an operating surplus in relation to what you had budgeted for, about seven point eight million. So in turn, your financial statements in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards are just under six point four for your annual surplus there. Net financial asset position up to a hundred and four million. I have an audit findings report that I'll go over, but in summary, there were no significant control deficiencies, no unusual accounting policies or estimates, we have some unrecorded misstatements to note, and then no significant difficulties. I'll also talk more about the A R O adoption there, but that's kind of in summary to our, to our findings. And I just wanted to thank Susan, Tracy, Chelsea, the team there for their work in, in helping us complete the audit. And I guess if anybody has any questions on this part, before I jump into the other report, I can definitely take those now.
Thank you.
All right, so this is the qualitative component of our, of our, of our work here. So just a bit of the table of contents here, so there's an, I'll go over the executive summary real quick. I'll talk about audit results, so areas of focus for us, any, our risk, any findings within those. Talk about any misstatements we had noted, talk about the control environment, other observations, and then some appendices at the end. So when it comes to our executive summary, really the purpose of this report is to promote two-way communication between ourselves, the auditors, and yourselves as counselors. So effectively, as of today, we have substantially completed our audit. So we'll complete our subsequent event procedures today, we'll obtain a signed management representation letter, we'll complete our required communication, which is what we're doing right now. We'll also obtain evidence of council's approval of financial statements, and we'll obtain our legal confirmations that we get sent out, which I know we got one yesterday, and I expect I'll want to come in today. When it comes to changes from our audit plan, the only change from our audit plan to our audit findings is in relation to our materiality levels, as those were initially based on prior year's numbers and have been adjusted to, to current year actuals. So for twenty-twenty-three, we use four percent of operating expenses, or three point six million, as our benchmark there. So what we're saying is if your hundred and four million dollar revenue or expenses were to increase or decrease by three point six million, a user of the financial statement may have a different view or outlook or opinion on the financial results there. So again, users being yourselves as counselors, municipal affairs. So those are the, kind of the thresholds that we would use for, for materiality there. We also encountered no significant difficulties while performing our work. When it comes to our engagement team, so myself and Craig Peter is the manager on the file. Craig has worked with me for, for a lot of years, and he's been the manager on, on the M D's engagement for, for a few years now. When it comes to audit results, I'll just highlight a few of these areas here, as you have it with you already, but the main one really at the top here, management override of controls. So, so management's in a unique position to, you know, potentially perpetrate or manipulate the financial statement results through the use of journal entries. So what we do is we use data analytic tools that identify journal entries with specific characteristics. We then test those journal entries to ensure that they are valid business entries that should be made within the financial statements. So we had no significant findings within that area. When it comes to revenue recognition in relation to deferred revenue and government transfers here, the big risk is that you're recognizing grant revenue before performance obligations have been met. So we do update our understanding of all your grant agreements, ensure that the amount collected has been collected, and then also tie back the costs or, or what's required to be spent on that money back to, back to your tangible capital assets or operating expenses. So we had no findings within that area. I'll skip these ones here. When it comes to your receivable balances, so here, we want to ensure again that, that those are be deemed to be collectible. So looking at items subsequent to your end, when we're looking at your tax receivables, do you have valid security? If taxes are deemed to be uncollectible there, or should you have an allowance to make up any potential gaps there? So we had no findings in that area as well. When it comes to tangible capital assets, so this is a big component of the M D's financial statements, as you spent twenty-one million dollars on additions. So here we're looking at, are the additions you have in there actual valid tangible capital asset additions? Or should you potentially have expenses associated with those, or are they repairs? Do you have any assets that are impaired at your end? So should they be written down, because they no longer provide economic value? And then as well as looking at your amortization expense, which we recalculate to make sure that that's accurate. We, we recalculate your accretion expense, we're looking at your gain-loss on disposal, and as well as auditing additions in the year. So a lot of work gets done in there, but we had no significant findings that have been identified. When it comes to inventory, again, we want to make sure that that's been measured at year-end and that, that the values there are in line with third-party confirmation. So we had no significant findings in inventory as well. When it comes to asset retirement obligation, obviously being a new section this year, first-time adoption risks that were, you know, potential management bias in this, because it is an estimate. So from an audit standpoint, we're really concerned about the completeness of that liability. So, you know, did we spend, did the M D look at all of its assets? Did it do good due diligence on everything? So from an audit standpoint, we're looking at that, we're assessing their processes, we're, again, recalculating, look at the reasonability of the estimates, confirming where the information was coming from via third-party or internal, to make sure that's correct. So I felt that actually the M D management did a really good job with your asset retirement obligation. There's a lot of, a lot of work done in there in comparison. So, yeah, I just thought that I would point that out to you guys. So I, we had no significant findings in there, there's a lot of work for us to audit, a lot of work for them to do it, but pretty happy with, with what we had received on our end in relation to work there. When it comes to misstatements, so we had noted audit adjustments throughout this, the audit. So we had fourteen adjustments, up a couple from last year's twelve. Those adjustments caused a ten million dollar increase in assets, two point six million dollar increase in liabilities, a fourteen, twelve point four million dollar increase in accumulated surplus, and then a net decrease of annual surplus of five point one. Really, they were entries, the client, you know, you guys were preparing in relation to A R O, and then as well as the Bonneville Regional Fire entries, when it comes to consolidation. When it comes to unrecorded misstatements, so here are entries that we had noted during our audit that are not reflected within the financial statements, they amount to an understatement of a hundred and forty-three thousand. Really, the first one is to just reallocate credit balances and accounts receivable to liabilities. And the second one is to adjust your allowance for uncollectible taxes, down a hundred and forty-three thousand there. So again, we don't feel that these adjustments would change the view of anyone's opinion on the financial results, and that's why they're reflected here in our unrecorded misstatement schedule. When it comes to your control environment and other observations, so we did not know any significant deficiencies in internal controls. When it comes to significant qualitative aspects of accounting policy, so just to note here that the one new accounting adoption in relation to thirty-two eighty, which is actually no twenty-seven, not twenty-eight, so I'll make that adjustment on the final copy, in relation to new accounting standards, you also adopted financial instruments, section thirty-four fifty, in relation to there, as it adjusted your, your investments from what they were previously, as well as additional disclosure. So we're of the opinion that your significant accounting policies and disclosures are in line with public sector accounting standards, as well as your own. When it comes to significant qualitative aspects of your accounting estimates, overall, we're satisfied there with the reasonability of your accounting estimates. So again, your A R O, your amortization expense based on your actual useful life, so those are the main estimates in there, as well as any potential accrued liabilities that, that are recorded. We'll submit a management letter to municipality's management, so if council needs to see that as well, they can definitely ask that, but that's in relation to any non-significant items that we would have noted. When it comes to appendices, just our required communication here that we do not hold the financial interest or economic dependence on the M D, so maintain our independence there, effectively up to today's date. Appendix two is our management representation letter that we get Al to sign, that information was forthcoming to us in regards to our work on the audits, as well as Susan. And then appendix three, new and revised accounting standards. So there are more new standards coming for next year, there's three new ones. Potentially could be some adjustments when it comes to revenue recognition here in regards to P S thirty-four hundred. And then another big one, which is for, effective for December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven, which will be the financial statement presentation, which will change from what you currently look, look at into something different, as I believe they're gonna go back to a regular balance sheet. But I have not looked entirely into that, but I'll probably have a lot more information on that for you next year. But, yeah, more changes to the conceptual framework for Canadian Public Sector. So I thought we were done after A R O, but, yeah, another one coming. That is, that's kind of it for my presentation, I guess. If anybody has any questions on this part, I can definitely address those.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Scarsen.
Like, do you think maybe that the Kinnisou Hill should have its own line there, instead of being under Parks and Rec?
I mean, I mean, I guess internally, if, if you felt that that would be a separate department or component that you wanted to see separately, you could talk with management. I mean, I mean, it's grouped in there now. If it was separated as, as a separate line item, like on the expense side, you mean, or?
On both.
Just on both expense side and revenue, yeah. Could, we could even do a schedule for the user charges, just to kind of break out the revenues, too. That might be another, another option or a note there, but, yeah, definitely for next year.
Yeah, there's, Schedule Five has a breakdown, but it still doesn't, just, you know, it says Parks, Rec, and Library, right?
Yeah, it just breaks it down into the department, where the, each revenue, but it's not, not a separate, I guess, department within the financial statements, it's kind of grouped in there. But, yeah, if that's something council wants to see, they could definitely discuss with management, and changes can be.
Yeah, in regards to your appendix three, your last comment about the, the new practices, is that a provincial requirement now? Is that something that they're looking for?
These are, so these are federal, like, Canadian C P A adoption or whatever of a standard. So they're, they're national, so they're across Canada for, for all, all local governments or government organizations that report out of that framework. So the national body provides that.
So it's like a new best practices?
Yeah, so they have, like, I don't know, they have, like, committees and then panels, and then they, they provide additional, like, what they're gonna do, and then other C P As across Canada can provide their input as well, and then they kind of just report on these changes, kind of going forward from a national C P A level, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Thank you. Back to Councilor Scarsen.
Yeah, just your, like, so your risks, response, and findings, is that, are those like general risks that you typically see? Or is that specific to the M D?
Well, they're risks in relation to what you have on the financial statement. So specifically, like, your inventory one would be a bit unique in relation to the, the gravel and the work done there.
Like, it's just, it's, so it's not something that you would, those are the same risks you see throughout at each municipality?
No, they, well, they are specific to the municipalities that we would audit, obviously, you know, tax, like, you know, they have a lot of the same components, but, you know, a not-for-profit would be different areas.
Asking because, like, you have the risks, and then you put your response, but then there's no findings on any of them, so is it?
Yeah, so if we had, yeah, so if we had significant findings in those areas, then we would note those, and then we would discuss them later within our presentation. So because we're not, we, we're not discovering anything of significance, that should be brought to your attention, that's why they're, in Canada, there's no, we'd have them as, like, red in regards to. So if we had, like, a restatement of some area because of some work, we would indicate that in there. If we were qualifying something in relation to being unable to audit it, areas where we may have had significant adjustments potentially made, or there's deficiencies in internal controls, that's where we would, we would note those findings and address them later in our report. It's kind of good, I do have some that are all red, so. The green ones are a lot better.
Well, I don't see any other questions, so, thank you.
Thank you, thanks again for, for having me, and, yeah.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, it is a protocol that the council's offered an opportunity to speak to the auditor in closed session alone. If council would like to do that, this would be the appropriate time to move in the closed session. If there are no closed session questions that council would have for the auditor, it doesn't have to happen, but we do want to make sure the council has that opportunity.
Okay, does any of, want to council want to ask some questions in camera? Do we usually do this, or?
I've seen it very rarely, particularly on a clean audit such as? I've seen it very rarely, particularly on a clean audit such as this. I don't know what council would ask, but we want to make sure the council does have the opportunity to speak privately to the auditor if there are some questions or concerns.
Okay, does anybody wish to speak to the auditor in camera?
I know we've done it in the past, but I, I think that you broke it down for us pretty good today, for sure, and I don't see anything glaring, right?
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate you guys having me again, and all the best in twenty-twenty-four.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, thank you.
Well, I guess we have to make a motion? Okay, thank you.
So we can finish the report now and ask for council's decisions. That council approves the two thousand twenty-three audited consolidated financial statement for the municipal district of Bonneville as presented. And secondly, that council approves the transfer of the two thousand twenty-three operating surplus in the amount of five million four hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two ninety-nine to the cash flow reserve as per municipal policy.
Okay, I'm just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that council approves the twenty-twenty-three audited, audited.
All right, thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the two thousand twenty-three audited consolidated financial statement for municipal district of Bonneville as presented. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Looking for another motion? Yes?
So with, with the five million four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars there, I guess we could put it into the, what is it, cash flow reserve, but else, we, we did start Town Road six-ten, and we didn't have the money last year to, we were, it was going to be a three-year project, we did three miles each year, and we were short, short funds, so we didn't put in the budget. So I would kind of like to see this money go towards that road instead, or at least consider it anyways. We were, it was supposed to be done this, this summer, this building season, and it didn't get done. All right, we didn't put it in the budget, and we, even we put this money into the budget, it wouldn't get done this year because we had, there's no tenders out yet. But I think we could look at putting that into the budget, putting it in, setting it aside for next year's construction season.
Any comments?
Yeah, go ahead. Well, yeah, we can discuss that at light in. For the meantime, this money can still sit in the, I'm referring to cash flow, so I'll make the motion to move it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion that council approves transfer of two thousand twenty-three operating surplus in the amount of five million and change to the cash flow reserves as per municipal policy. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the finance staff. They worked really hard this year. They've done a great job in pulling this all together, and I'd like also to thank Jeff and Metrics Group for all of their hard work and, and their support. This year, we had a bazillion questions about asset retirement obligations that they answered for us, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's take a five-minute break, gentlemen. Okay, welcome back. Thank you, gentlemen. I think we're going to go into ten correspondence and information.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Fairly short list today. Ten point one, the news release from the town of Bonneville. That was Mayor Bresso's letter regarding the twenty-twenty-four provincial budget media release, particularly surrounding Highway twenty-eight. We had sent out, based on some council direction and a request to create a joint assessment review board. The city of Cold Lake has declined the invitation to be part of that. A letter from Alberta Health Services, email from MLA Scott Seer regarding the twenty-twenty-four wildfire season, and a letter from the Minister Schultz regarding forestry and parks in the wildfire season, and then the council action report. And that's it for correspondence.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion or any questions. Yes, Counselor Craviak? Thank you, Counselor Craviak, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council accepts the following correspondence information, one through six. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie, thank you. Okay, we're on to reports from members of council. Who would like to start? Yes, Counselor Fadav?
Hey, I'll start. It's been fairly quiet week. I'd like to talk about FCSS. Get my notes here. Yeah, so for the Meals on Wheels program, they delivered one-hundred-and-fifty-nine meals out there, and that was including wards five and six. They had, they also did some counseling, counseling sessions, and we, they seen twenty-five last month. Their adaptive transportation, they had three hundred and thirty-nine clients that they, that they drove around, and they had to turn down fourteen. Family connections from zero years to six. They had five hundred and sixty-seven people attended their, their certain events and programs. And then ten people, they assisted with forms such as tax forms and things like that. So overall, overall, pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Whoever's next, go ahead.
I'll go ahead. It's also short. Cold Lake Museum had a, an open house for the Air Force one-hundredth year event on April sixth, and it was kind of just nice to cruise around and see some of the military stuff, and Deputy Reeve Crick was there with his kids, and I'm sure they enjoyed that, too. And then had a meeting with River, Riverline Trail Group. There's a bylaw that the MD does have a copy of, that each, each of the ten municipalities will be looking at just for trail, kind of trail maintenance and trail usage. And so that's with us. Mary Ann's going to reach out to Brian Spelko and just look at a few issues that Brian had with that trail bylaw. Right now, there's fifty percent of the MDs that have that trail bylaw that have signed it, and so we're, it's, it's an ongoing thing. It'll, it'll take a while to get it done, but we discussed toilets along the trails. The MD of Bonneville actually has no, no outhouses on, I think we're the largest section of trail with no outhouses, I wasn't sure about that one, but Munich Corps is getting some funding to try some, maybe chemical toilets or whatever along that trail system. And the other, I guess the other comment about that one was, there's a trail, there's a section of trail east of Ardmore that's through the reserve that has had issues, needs to be brushed, and it hasn't been graded, it's very rough. So Mary Ann's actually working with Mr. Zandvier to kind of get access to that trail and figure out how we can kind of go forward and groom it. It's about a mile or a mile and a half a trail. Oh, the other one was a trail near Glendon, or throughout Glendon, has problems with vehicles on it, so I've, I've just told the trail stewards to contact our, our municipal safety guys, and, and they can kind of work with them and see if we can get these vehicles from driving on that trail. We've done it in the past by the trestle, so I'm sure we can help out with the trail sort of into Glendon. And that's it, thank you.
I just got a question for you. Did you guys ever discuss, or putting some signage on the trail anywhere?
Yeah, that's come up, and I, I got, I asked Mary Ann about it two meetings ago, and she said, yep, sorry, it's my fault. She's going to bring that to the MD and kind of request that we work with, with Munich Corps or whatever and get a sign up at, at the trestle or on the highway thereby, you know, for access to the trestle. So, like, that's the one you're referring to?
I meant more like slowing down in areas where you're going by houses and stuff like that.
Uh, that, we haven't had that discussion, but there's, I mean, there are signs on that trail, right? So you're right, we could, if you had a specific complaint, let us know, and, and we can maybe, I think, I think you brought that up some time ago, didn't you?
Yeah.
But, yeah, so I don't know where that went, because I-
They set some concerns out at Moose Lake Estates, I think it's called, and, or Evergreen Estates, whose backyards are right on the trail, we'll just keep a zipping by there, so.
Yeah, because there are speed limits on that trail, so we could do that or whatever. I'll, I'll let, I'll reach out to Mary Ann, and maybe you can reach out to her after I contact her or whatever, give her some detail.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Who wants to go next?
Yeah, so I can, I don't have a lot either. We just, next week, we're doing a tour with the Alberta Games winner folks and showing them some of the, I think you're coming to, right?
Facilities, yeah.
Facilities throughout the lake line and all that, so.
Yeah, I'll go next.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had a large meeting. I went through an audit. Things are going well. Eight vacancies only in Cold Lake, Bonneville fourteen, and the Cold Lake demolition contract has been extended to June twenty-fourth. They have some landscaping to do and other things. Bonneville Municipal Library, things are going okay, went through some policies. Had a community policing meeting. The Bonneville detachment is six short-staffed, five hundred and sixty-three files last month, twenty-four mental health calls. One person was arrested three times and released, like theft of a truck and weapons-related charges, and just being released, no repercussions. Cold Lake had six hundred and ninety files, had some drug seizures, there's six members short as well. Had Glendon Library, had a presentation by Ken Allen, he's a library legislative advisor. He talked about schoolhouse, public library requirements. Upcoming session on policies, they have to be done by the end of September. And Saturday, April twentieth, there's an OLE session on plan of service. And also, there's a cake auction on April twenty-fifth, their annual cake auction, used to be before Easter, now it's April twenty-fifth because of the zabava they had at the same time, so it would have been too close. That's all from me, thank you.
All right.
I have nothing really to report. I attended the Munich Corps meeting on Zoom the other, yesterday, but I went to the Cold Lake Air Force thing on Saturday. Lived here all my life, and that's the first time I ever went there. It's an amazing place. I recommend anybody watching or everybody, take your kids and everybody take, take them there, so very interesting.
I didn't have too much either, and policy meeting with the Northern Knights Library System, and Chamber, Bonneville District Chamber of Commerce, AGM, and I was also at the Air Force Museum. And, yeah, it was really good, and then the military had a lot of personnel there to explain almost everything in their museum, so it was actually quite, quite neat, really. That's it for me.
All right, I think Mike touched on the policing, though, but we were informed that our police here, from a ten to twenty thousand people, like population, our police almost do double the work that someone else from a ten to twenty thousand. Well, there were some even three times as much in the ma, it was called a matrix as well, wasn't it?
Yeah, and that's for the MD's parts, yeah.
Yes, for our MD. So it's incredible what aren't, like, and they're searching for people to come to our area. So the people that are coming to our area or want to come to our area, you got to just look at that, they get to see that information, too. And would you want to come here and, you know, do the same amount of work as you can do somewhere else for half the amount of work for the same amount of pay? But then Sarah, she told us that some people like to come to the areas that are more busy because they're not twiddling their thumbs either, so that was kind of, I didn't think I'd hear that. But anyway, for your information, our RCMP do twice as much or three times as much in certain categories as someone else in the province with the same amount of population. So it's quite a shocking number. I also met, met on Zoom with Minister Dreschen yesterday. He's given me an update, and Mr. Copeland and, and Elisa, Mrs. Bros, who are the mayors from this area, about Highway twenty-eight status, and not a lot going to be happening in twenty-four. They're thinking maybe a bit of the highway will be done between Smokey and Wasseto. A lot of capital is going to be trying to put, put into two thousand twenty-five, and they think the, you know, some of the dirt work's going to start in two thousand twenty-five, and the majority of the project might be happening in two thousand twenty-six. But he also said that, I don't know if you guys heard this, or Brian, have you heard anything about a, they're going to do a, where the oil comes from in this province, they're going to, they're going to see where all the wells come from, and then they're going to generate their funding from, from where the wells are producing or come, you haven't heard nothing? So I just heard that yesterday. So they're waiting on a report, you know, to see where, what highways are going to get affected the most from the most oil activity in, in the area. So I think we're going to sit pretty high on that list. So that's what he's, that's a new thing that just came up yesterday that I heard. So, yeah, but they're, they're on it. I was going to ask, my thing wasn't working very good, I was going to ask a question, we don't, like, they have five million dollars, it's not a lot to engineer a road, so I couldn't get my mic to work, so, but, yeah, I was just wondering where more money for engineering was going to come from, but I couldn't get my white, mic to go, so, yeah. Counselor Fadav?
Yeah, that five million is for design work and study, right? So nothing to do with engineering.
It's not doing very much, yeah. But anyway, they're on it, so, yeah, it's good, good to hear. It was a pretty good meeting. Yes?
Talking about RCMP again, are we, are we short RCMP staff in, in Bonneville and Cold Lake?
Yeah, I think we're four, four and two, or two and four.
Four, four, possibly, two.
Yes.
In, in both or just total?
I think that was in both.
Six.
Six and six.
So we're short six and six? Wow.
We're, sorry, I'll just finish that. Some, some are transferring out, and they're waiting for their houses to sell, and some are transferring in, they're waiting for houses to sell and stuff, so, you know, they have, they call it soft and hard, I don't really, that's someone coming in. How do, how do you explain that, Mike?
Well, hard means you mean transferred, I guess, and soft means you're on leave, that's all, so, yeah.
I forgot the numbers on that, I should have wrote them down.
I hate to ask this one, but is, is, are those six rural or, or urban from each? I don't know.
I don't. Yeah, they're, I don't think there's, yeah, go ahead. Ben, did you have a question?
Yeah, so in regards to what the minister said, that don't worry about it, we're going to be on it, but are, like, are they going to change their budget format that we're going to be included in there, there's going to be some money, because there's nothing happening for our next three years on their capital plan, right? There's, there's zero dollars in there, so I don't know how they can say they're going to put money towards it, well, there's nothing on their books. Is that going to change?
Well, yeah, he promised us, and there was a lot of people, there was probably twenty people on this thing, he said there's, it's going to start happening, and twenty-twenty-six, it's going to, a big part of the, the road's going to be done. So little bit of earthwork this year, two thousand twenty-five, it's going to be in the capital plan, and two thousand twenty-six, it's going to be in the capital plan as well, is what, is what I was told yesterday. So they're, they're really serious, but there was a but, this oil, where the oil comes from is going to be a big factor to-
Yeah, and that was kind of part of the conversation at, at RMA that we were discussing, and, you know, they, they did recognize that, you know, where we're at, and also were, you know, because eight-eighty-one was brought up by, by Wood Buffalo, and so was Highway twenty by us, and they did recognize that, that the amount of oil revenue coming from here will have an impact on where they might put some money, so.
Well, I really liked his statement, like, that was, that was very key for us, because we have a lot of oil coming out of this area. If we have thirty, if our, if we, if we know that we have thirty-three percent of the oil coming out of our area here, well, that's going to, should trigger twenty-eight for sure.
Yeah, especially Ward three and four.
That's right. So, yeah, there's a lot of other guys asking questions about other highways, but, you know, you know, they, they were just, they kind of threw them to the side, and they were focusing on twenty-eight. Meeting was about twenty-eight and then no other highway. So that was very positive, I thought it was very positive, and, and I think we have a great, great, and then they, they'd also talked about the twinning between Cold Lake and, and- And then they, they'd also talked about the twinning between Coal Lake and, and Bonneville. And then pretty well pullouts the rest of the way on Highway twenty-eight, but they, they talked about the twinning. And like I said, I wanted to know where more engineering money was coming, but my, I couldn't get my mic to go, I apologize. Any other questions on that? No. Right on, so that's good, so we'll go back into camera, I guess? I need a motion to. Yes, Counselor Kavyak? I'll call for, I'll call for the vote.
That's carried, thank you, we're in camera.
I did, three times.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make that motion, thank you.
Counsel, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick?
I think it's a great, great initiative that they're doing, but I think the amount is too high here, so I'm, I'm in favor of a lower amount.
Thank you for that, any other? Okay, same, then I'll call for the vote.
Yeah, welcome back, go ahead, Esther.
Sounds good, Mr. Reeve. So today we have a delegation here, which is Stan Tech Consulting. Specifically Sylvia Summers, who's a senior associate with Stan Tech Consulting. She is here to provide us a presentation on the M D of Bonneville Land Use Bylaw Review Project, which we have just started initiated with them, and to also conduct an opportunity or an opportunity and constraints activity with council. So council will be asked to be very and, and to provide input into the process. I was gonna try to think of something funny, but I'm not that funny, so with that, I'll let Sylvia come up and, and take over, thank you.
I thought it was pretty funny, so it's good.
Good afternoon.
Hey, welcome, can we just give, give it a couple seconds, we have one guy not here quite yet, so, but you can tell us where you're from and. Oh, he's back.
Well, welcome, thank you.
Thank you, so, good afternoon, I'm Sylvia Summers, I'm a senior associate and planner with Stan Tech Consulting. Stan Tech has been hired by the M D of Bonneville to help assist with review and update of the M D of Bonneville's land use bylaw. The purpose of my presentation today is to introduce and provide an overview of the project to you. I'd then like to do a group exercise with you to look at drivers for the land use bylaw update and get your input. I'd then, I'll then discuss next steps. So, there's a, there's a hierarchy to these land use planning documents. From broad inter-municipal development plans, I D Ps, between municipalities that share a common boundary. Municipal wide plans, M D Ps, that provide a framework for development on an M D wide basis. To more specific plans for areas within the municipality, A S Ps. All of these are considered statutory documents and must be consistent with one another. In addition, the Government of Alberta's Municipal Government Act requires that municipalities have a land use bylaw which establishes development and building regulations for every parcel of land through land use districts and zoning. The land use bylaw is a tool that implements the policies of I D Ps, the M D Ps, and area structure plans. The document we're discussing today is the land use bylaw.
Can I just, excuse, can you just move that mic towards you and just a little bit up? I don't have a.
Better?
Sure, anything will be better.
Okay, I'll lean forward.
Sorry.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
So, the M D of Bonneville is undertaking a review and update of the current land use bylaw, which was adopted in two thousand and seventeen. It has undergone several amendments and additions since then. This review will align the land use bylaw with the regional and provincial legislation and policies that have come into effect since the last update, such as the Municipal Government Act. Align the land use bylaw with the M D of Bonneville's long-term direction from the new municipal development plan. Align the land use bylaw with the recently approved statutory plans, such as area structure plans. And ensure that the land use bylaw addresses emerging trends and responds to demand for development. So, the project is divided into four phases, and these are the timelines for each phase. I'm going to go into a little more detail on each phase in the next slide. We're currently in Phase One, Project Initiation, which is scheduled to run from January to April. Phase Two, Baseline and Context, is scheduled from February to May. Phase Three, Drafting the Land Use Bylaw, will take place from May to November. And the final phase, Finalizing the Land Use Bylaw, will take place from November to January. So this is our process. During the project initiation phase, we're meeting with council today to introduce the project. We'll launch the land use bylaw update, letting landowners, stakeholders, and community members know about the project. In Phase Two, Baseline and Context, we'll review all relevant documents, plans, bylaws, and mapping, and prepare a land use bylaw background report identifying areas in the land use bylaw that should be revised and new regulations be considered. We'll hold two open houses using the findings of the background report as a jumping off point for engagement with community to get their feedback on these findings and identify any additional opportunities and constraints that need to be considered. And those land, those open houses have now been identified as taking place on May eighth and May ninth. Taking all of the feedback received and work undertaken to date, we'll work with the M D's project team to prepare the draft land use bylaw in Phase Three. Once the draft has been prepared and the M D's project team has signed off on it, we will meet with the community again in October. In Phase Four, the M D project team and we will review the feedback received from community and determine which modifications of the land use bylaw should be made. Stan Tech will make them, make the necessary modifications and finalize the land use bylaw. The land use bylaw will move forward to public hearing in January twenty-twenty-five. Once the bylaw is approved on second and third reading, Stan Tech will compile and provide the M D with all digital copies of the land use bylaw and associated mapping. So that's just a quick overview of our process. So now, I'd like to just quickly shift in the time that we have to a really brief exercise, probably about ten minutes. So I've talked about kind of the, some of the official drivers for the land use bylaw update aligning with provincial legislation. You have a new M D P that we want to make sure that the land use bylaw aligns with, as well as recent A S Ps that have been approved. But I'd like to talk to you and get your feedback on other issues and opportunities that you've been hearing from your constituents potentially that we should be taking into consideration as part of this land use bylaw process. We'll be going out to them again in, in May to have this same conversation with them directly. But I thought it might be helpful to take this opportunity to have a quick conversation with you as to what you think might be some of the issues and opportunities that we should be thinking about. Mr. Reeve, do you have?
I'll open it up for council. No, Josh, if it's about the trail. I just took it.
Well, I'll just ask you right now, what is, like, what's the now in twenty-seventeen, why, so why is it, is it just because it's, has to be updated?
Well, it's always recommended, it's an L U B along with all your statutory documents or living documents, they change and update through time as things take place. But since then, the M G A has been updated, that needs to be reflected. You have a new municipal development plan. The L U B is the implementation tool to make sure that the statutory plans that council has approved can be implemented effectively, and that's part of the review and update process for this. You've got a new M D P, you've got new, some new statutory plans that you've recently approved, some that have been amended. So it's basically seen as kind of being a good point in time to review the L U B to make sure that it's functioning properly and effectively for the M D.
So have you, so I guess you really haven't reviewed the L U B yet, is that right?
We're in the process of.
So you haven't really identified anything that needs to be changed?
Well, we're, we're in the process of that, of that, but one of the things I was hoping to hear from you is have you heard anything from your constituents in particular that, that potentially are, are a concern that we should, we should think about or opportunity?
Make sure they can still raise chickens in their backyard, so.
Okay.
I was gonna say the same thing, that's what I heard too, actually.
Okay. Was, is this like in hamlets or in any area?
Joking, but it was whenever the one was done out in, where was that? Yeah, Thorhill there, so, you know, as long as we don't have another one of those situations, I guess, right, so.
Okay, so animal, animal control is a concern or?
What I heard is from my residents about hobby farms, making sure we keep them in mind, like small hobby farms, because we're seeing more and more of that pop, popping up everywhere, that they're, we protect them and make sure that they can have their little business ventures or whatever.
Okay.
So farm animals on the side, on certain sizes of land, let's say, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I've heard there's people are concerned there's too much restrictions on this, farm animals on size of land, so like, I think right now we have restrictions if it's under five acres or under ten acres. Lots of people move out to the country, they could live in town, but they're choosing to move to an acreage because they want to have some animals and they get out there and they realize, oh, I can't have the animals that I wanted to have. So just kind of less restrictions there.
So review, review your current bylaws and, and look at opportunities for some potential relaxation or, or take that into consideration? Any other issues or opportunities?
Yeah, good morning, I think bees are, are a big part of it, I don't know if that's captured or not, but we had some, some changes in our bylaws about that, so as long as that's, that, you know, you might see some questions about that. Yeah, that's just the bees, the bees.
Did you say bees?
Bee-ary, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, because we, we did discuss it, like Counselor Fede said a while ago. We had some issues and I think we made some, you know, good changes, but I guess we could look at that again. And I'm, and I'm sure there'll be questions on that, and I'll open those, yeah.
I guess my message is there's, you know, since the Thorhill kerfuffle happened, a lot of people were, were, you know, a little I guess disheartened by, by some of the rules and regulations that was proposed at the first reading over there. They didn't realize that it did get defeated and, but there's some highs, some, some concerns.
Okay. Any other opportunities that we should think about? And like I said, we'll be going out in May, at the beginning of May, and to have this same conversation with stakeholders and community members too, to, to try and get their feedback before we move forward into the actual drafting of the, of the land use bylaw.
So I guess when you do your presentations, like, will you have like, they might come, a lot of people come in, it's even about, right? So will you have reference to the existing land use bylaws and present, you know, present that as, this is how things are currently done, are you happy with this, or do you need changes?
So as part of the, as part of our process, we're also looking at, going to be making some recommendations, like looking at the existing land use bylaw. So things like animal control, putting forward potentially some items up for consideration, but also generally looking at what have we missed, so are there other opportunities or issues? It's the very first open house, so it's more, it's an introduction and it's, it's an opportunity for people to let us know what their thoughts are or what their concerns are that we should be taking into consideration.
If you, you know, if you end up getting a hall full of people, I can, I'll tell you right now that most of them won't even know what's on the existing one, right? And so as long as you can make reference to what's there and, you know, otherwise you'll be feeling all kinds of comments, let's say, so.
Yeah, yeah, we can basically go over the, do an overview of the land use bylaw and we can have copies of the existing land use bylaw also available for people at the hall to, to take a look at. And there'll be myself and other M D staff there to answer any questions about what the existing bylaw currently, currently does as well.
Wind farms was another one.
Wind farms?
Wind farms. I don't know how we deal with it in the land use bylaw, but. Wind farms.
Are, are you saying, the wind farms, doesn't mean people don't want wind farms around here, or?
Well, people, some people don't, but some people do, and they, the only reason they do though, because they'll get money for it. But then they don't realize what's happening to their land, right? It's kind of not theirs after they do that and then they may, anyway, that's, I think that's kind of covered in the land use bylaw.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that as well and take a look and see what current regulations might have and other regulations that we could consider, take into consideration as well and potentially have that conversation.
Yeah, you had another one in here, work camps, or it's in our land use bylaw? Could look at that, I mean, I, I have a, kind of a specific issue with one on Highway fifty-five called Country Camping. It's, it's designated, I guess, country camping. Nice, nice sign on the highway, but it actually was a work camp for many years when things were booming out there. And it's still there and it's just empty, but it's, I don't know, I guess we deal with that, but I'm not sure if that was a work camp or a campground.
Another one is secondary suites on existing property where now you're getting more people building a little building for their parents or maybe somebody from the family, you know, so it's that kind of stuff.
Providing those opportunities for people who, who want to have their parents come stay or for sorts of family opportunities, medical opportunities, if somebody needs some in-home care. Any other items? If not, we'll also have this opportunity again for discussion, like I said, in, in May. So this is a really good start for us to, for us to move forward with as part of our initial look at the land use bylaw. And we can bring these items up for discussion in May as well to get, to get landlords and stakeholders' opinions on as well as to and add to for the, for discussion purposes. Is there anything else before I move on?
I've got one more thing.
Go ahead.
Something, maybe even dust control and stuff, like, because we're getting a lot of people complaining about. Dust, like, is there something, I don't know. Said bring whatever the people bring.
I just want to know how this is all gonna be advertised. I don't know if that's a question to Al or to you, or how's it gonna be advertised?
So we've been working with your communications group to basically prepare media releases. There will be a dedicated page on the M D's website with regard. there will be a dedicated page on the MD's website with regards to this information, it'll also be going out through social media, there will be continuous updates on those, on those communications pieces, to keep people informed about, about the LUB process as well, so.
And local paper?
Yeah, local paper.
Okay, because I don't want, I get, that's my biggest thing always, get all these phone calls that we never, never put it out there, and it is always out there, but that's, we get it all the time.
And it'll be going out in the rural review as well, so we've tried to work with your communications team to provide as many opportunities to engage and inform as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
There was something that came up some years ago at the MD where a developer wanted to sell automotives, vehicles, different things, and, and is that in the land use bylaw, or is that in a, where would that be?
Um...
Location of?
Yeah, it would be in the land use bylaw, so where you would be allowed to undertake...
Do you know where that is?
The sale, I don't know what definition it's currently under, but...
Well, it caused a problem some years ago, so.
Okay, we'll fight that as well.
So, Mr. Reeve, through the Reeve, to Councilor Swagert, that would be found multiple places in the bylaw, under, either under home occupation, major or minor. It'll be a designation inside of an actual, an actual zone, for example, if it's ag, it'll be a permitted or discretionary use or prohibited, so it'll be multiple places in the bylaw. Ms. Poyet could probably speak directly to where it is now, but those, those kind of home-based businesses will be, will be scattered throughout the bylaw, depending on whether it's a permitted use or discretionary use or not permitted at all.
Okay, it, it wasn't home-based, though, it was, you know, it was a major kind of business that wanted to do that, but I'm just not sure where it is. Anyway, the point, I guess I was making at the time, we apparently, we limited any type of auto sales or whatever to the towns or the hamlets or villages, so you couldn't, you couldn't locate it any other location other than that, and I thought that was not, that was kind of narrow-minded maybe at the time. If you got an industrial, you know, subdivision along Highway 41 or Highway 28 or whatever, you, and there was that kind of business going on, you think we'd be able to do that?
To looking at opportunities for those types of uses beyond, beyond the hamlet, but taking into consideration appropriate locations, say adjacent to major highways or an industrial, industrial areas? Okay. Okay, so, should we move on to next steps? So, the next step for the project will be, we'll launch the project on the MD's website and social media platforms, media releases, through papers, as, as many platforms as we can. We'll then engage with stakeholders, landowners, and community members in May to, the two open houses, so the dates have been pinned down, those are now May 8th and May 9th, and we'll then begin the process of drafting the land use bylaw after that engagement. So, any questions about the project?
I have a question about those dates, Mr. Hogan, is that the, is that the events that we're not supposed to attend?
It is my recommendation that on the open houses, it's really designed for residents to come and talk directly to the consultant and to the planning staff. Council puts, gets put in a position of some conflict when you take in a bunch of information before the public hearing, and then the public hearing comes and people could claim that a counselor or all of council has a bias because they heard information outside of the public hearing process. So I would recommend that you just, that council just leave those open houses to staff and to the consultant.
Okay, I just wanted to say that publicly, because when we don't show up to things like that, the public says, where's my counselor? Right? I mean, it happens all the time, so, sorry, public, we can't go.
Yes.
So, where are these sessions being held?
They are being held at Eastbourne and Riverhurst. So try to provide some geographic spacing to allow people from different areas of the MD to more easily be able to come to the open houses.
Thank you, any other questions, gentlemen? Well, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for starting early.
Yeah, you've got a good memory, because you didn't take any notes or whatever, so you're going to review the video, I assume, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and actually Christie was taking, taking notes as we were, as we were talking.
Cheers for Christie.
Thank you so much for your time today.
No, thank you, appreciate it. Give me a second here. Yeah, there's information? All right, just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, except as a...
Thank you, Councilor Slitk for making a motion. On behalf of council, the council accepts a presentation by Stantec Consulting Limited on the MD of Bonneville's land use bylaw updates as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Donnie said that he would love to go to Riverhurst.
Yes. He had a great time there last time. Did someone not vote? Sorry?
Nothing there for me.
Oh, not there? Are you in favor, lift your hand?
I am.
Okay, don't lift your hand. He's good, yeah, there we go. Looking for a motion, gentlemen, to go on camera. Yeah, thank you, Councilor Swagert, I'll call for the vote. We're all in favor? Let's carry you now, this. Thank you, have a safe trip.